Go.
Good morning. I'm now going to call the Tuesday, August 3, 2021, meeting of the Norfolk County Commissioners to order. On Thursday, March 12, 2020, Governor Charles Baker issued an order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, Mass General Law, Chapter 38, Section 20. That order was effective immediately, and until it is rescinded or the state of emergency is terminated. On Wednesday, June 16, 2021, by action of legislature, the order was extended until April 1, 2020. I'm now going to call this meeting to order and call the roll. Commissioner Collins. Commissioner Stady.
He's connecting.
I can see Commissioner Stady.
Good morning.
Good morning. Commissioner Stady is present. Commissioner Collins. And Commissioner Chairman Shay is present. We have a quorum. I want to welcome everyone. Today's meeting is a extra meeting of the county commissioners relative to federal funds and our application for APRA money, which we are excited about, and this is our first go around, so to speak, in selecting a team put together to do the job that needs to be done. By way of explanation, I'm going to call on the county director, John Cronin, for an update on the American Rescue Plan Act.
Morning, commissioners. Very briefly, this morning, you will hear from four firms who've expressed an interest in explaining their readiness and preparedness to help Norfolk County join in the management of the American Rescue Plan Act. Before we begin, I wanted to make a general announcement.
Hey, guys, I'm sorry I'm late. I was in some kind of funky cyber waiting room or something. I don't know. Sorry about that.
Commissioner, we have a full board present. Thank you.
Thank you. The county will be conducting the meeting as an open and public meeting pursuant to Massachusetts' General Law, Chapter 38. The meeting will be recorded and placed onto our website for future viewing. Separate minutes are maintained by this office as the official record of the proceedings once the county commissioners vote to accept them. The county understands any presentation today is informational and not necessarily a final deliverable or report. The county does not intend to create any additional obligations or liabilities as a result of today's proceedings. Commissioners, this morning, you will hear from KPMG, starting at this time. We've allotted approximately 30 minutes for the full presentation. That includes questions and answers. So with your permission, Mr. Chairman, I think at this point, we'll recognize representatives of KPMG and welcome them to our meeting. Thank you.
KPMG is first up to bat, so good morning and welcome. Introduce yourselves and off we go.
Good morning. This is Anthony Tripaso from KPMG. Do I have the ability to share my screen by any chance?
We'll go with you. One second.
Stand by. One minute.
Actually, can you do it for Anna Sternberg, if you don't mind?
Stand by one moment.
Okay.
Okay, so I'll kick things off as we're doing that, if that's okay. My name is Anthony Tripaso. Again, thank you all for the opportunity and your time today. I'm a CPA and managing director out of our risk and compliance state and local practice, focused on the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. I'm also our co-national lead for our program integrity service area that's focused on multiple different industries in government, where we really help our clients identify, mitigate their different risks, and provide different types of third-party oversight and monitoring, including grants management. Recently, some of my experiences have been, particularly in Massachusetts, we're going to be helping DPH in COVID audit fund readiness, audit readiness, working with their different vendors and contractors. We're also working coordination with MTX, who my partner Namrata Kumar is on the line for EEC with their childcare stabilization grant, KPMG supporting the risk and compliance and quality control of that program. I've also helped other clients with their subrecipient monitoring of different grant programs. Also on the line, we have Dave Pandillo. He's our Massachusetts account partner with deep government experiences over a decade. He's worked closely on various large-scale, multi-stakeholder technology implementations and then-to-end advisory support. He's been working with the Commonwealth with different government entities over the years. Jeff Thomas, I'm not sure if he was able to make it on, but he's on vacation this week, but was trying to call in. He's our resident JD and federal guidance expert. He previously met with Norfolk County Treasurer Bellotti alongside myself and Anna Sternberg. Jeff's delivering multiple grants management engagements across the country. Anna Sternberg is also on the line. She has control of the deck. She's managing our state and local manager in our state and local practice. She's been working over the last six years on different regulatory compliance, internal audit, and grants management projects to various state and local governments. Recently, Anna's been the lead manager for multiple engagements for the state of Colorado, working with the Corona Relief Funds and the oversight and monitoring to different state agencies. And then lastly, but not least, Namrata Kumar. She's with our technology partner MTX, who are working closely hand-in-hand on multiple government clients. We're currently supporting MTX, as I mentioned earlier, with the EEC childcare stabilization grant across thousands of provider applicants. MTX is also working across multiple cities and towns around the American Rescue Plan. We understand Norfolk's closely collaborating with other counties on these efforts. Namrata's team is very familiar, working on multi-multiple-county collaborative solutions that can help you manage a program and, most importantly, protect and segregate the data for those individual counties and constituents. And if you don't mind, just go into slide three. So KPMG is interested, ready, and capable to support Norfolk County and the administration of these dollars to support your cities and towns. As we connected initially with Treasurer Bellotti a month or two ago, we have an understanding and appreciation for how overwhelming these dollars are and how committed you are to help your constituents, while at the same time being compliant with U.S. Treasury's regulations. We also mentioned, we also were, as I mentioned briefly earlier, how closely you're collaborating with Bristol, Plymouth, and Barnstable. We've previously met with Plymouth and Barnstable ourselves. We understand how your communities, they have different ideas on how they may want to use the funds, including some of the not-for-profits potentially seeking funding. And how you work closely, sorry, was someone going to say something? Oh, I thought I heard a voice. And how you're going to work closely with your cities and towns to appropriately fund these organizations and their needs. We believe we're uniquely qualified based on the following. First, we are the auditor of the U.S. Treasury, so we know their compliance requirements very well. Secondly, we work at the federal, state, and local levels of government on many of these American Rescue Plan programs spanning across the different funding areas. We also advise our clients on investment strategies across the different multiple funding programs to help maximize the use of the funding. Fourth, at the state level, we're helping standing up different programs and implementation policies for those programs associated with these fundings. At the local levels in particular, with the cities and counties, we're working on some specific implementation of programs that include the technology, the outreach to the different stakeholders, and the ongoing oversight and monitoring. And then lastly, we bring the full scope of services to our clients and the knowledge we've gained across the United States. But it's not a one-size-fits-all. We work with our clients to really understand what are your specific needs and tailor what we can do based on those particular needs. So talk a little bit about the American Rescue Plan, slide four. Obviously, there's a number of different spending areas there, including revenue replacement, infrastructure investments, and so forth. Our regulatory compliance team has been tracking this, and we've been sharing updated guidance as things evolve. We shared a few months, maybe a month or two ago, the updated compliance and reporting requirements with Treasurer Bellotti. This is a program that goes beyond just accounting for the use of dollars. It really requires a trail for how you're going to be spending the money and the progress in meeting the different goals of the programs. And we could work closely with yourselves and others to facilitate a plan that helps pull the data forward from those different recipients to meet the requirements of the Treasury quarterly reports. Every, you know, for example, how detailed this guidance is. Each dollar has to be assigned one of seven or so multiple expense categories and subcategories, which each have its own program data that need to be reported quarterly. And it's not just, here's the trail for the accounting, but also, how are you doing in furthering the goals of the programs? How did the people benefit? For example, how did it maybe meet some climate change goals, things of that nature? And lastly, we understand the funds have to be obligated within, by the end of December '24, and expended by the end of 2026. We're also working closely across these different types of programs with those third parties to provide them different types of guidance and training, common stumbling blocks and so forth to help them along the way. And then ourselves, along with our MTX partners, have experiences quickly ramping up programs in a matter of weeks and coordinating these longer-term efforts. Just a few other slides I'll go through, first with slide six. You know, just this first slide here just gives you some self-reflective questions to consider for yourselves, as you may think through, how can someone like KPMG help? Slide seven, this just sort of highlights really the capabilities of the MTX and KPMG technology solution, which, as I mentioned earlier, can be customized for your needs. It's not necessarily one-size-fits-all. Some of the areas just to highlight, first, program management. This, you know, this solution will help you with the overall project oversight and project management from end to end. From a front, middle, and back office perspective, you'll be able to screen the applicants, interface with the applicants, vet those applications, and ultimately process the applications. From a case management side, any type of application support, including training, can be provided to those. Fraud management, we work closely with the technology to drive compliance throughout the lifecycle of the grant, from the application to the eligibility verification, all the way through the payment disbursement. And then lastly, monitoring compliance. On an ongoing basis, we review the different processes and documentation to do risk assessment and identify the key risks as they arise, which could potentially threaten the achievement of your goals. I'm just going to turn to Namrata, just to give an example of one of the real-life use cases of this technology and how that's been able to support some of our clients.
Thank you, Anthony, and good morning, everyone. Thank you for the opportunity to talk about the MTX Grants Management Solution. We have deployed it across the country in many different states. The example that I'm going to describe quickly here is what we implemented in Massachusetts EEC for ARPA Childcare Stabilization Grant. The system is, from beginning to end, in collaboration with KPMG, is built in compliances so that it reduces the administrative burden on county and city to distribute the funds and report back on those utilization of the funds. The system has a portal where applicants can come and see what they are eligible for. They can look at the available grants opportunity and apply for it. It's a human-centric design, which anyone can easily guide it, experience that anyone can follow through and apply for the application. The system ought to be built in the business rules to determine the grant's amount that the applicant is eligible for. This is built in to the system in close partnership with KPMG. And with you, we will build these business rules in the system so that system can determine what amount the cities are eligible for. They can apply for it, and most of it is automatically approved, so it reduces administrative burden. In the review process, it's also guided process, and there is QA process around that. More so end-to-end, cities can also report back on the progress. And the dashboards are, dashboards and reports are both qualitative and quantitative reporting to the Treasury and to the federal, as per the ARPA rules, which we will build in with KPMG and your guidance. We also have the wraparound services, which we can really provide, like reviewers, and support the county in implementation. Thank you.
Thanks, Namrata. And if you don't mind, just go into slide eight. Just a few other things to think about, some additional value we can provide you, if that's something you would so desire. Automation, you know, so we really look to a technology to help make things more efficient for yourselves. So the streamlining of the applications and processing, the data analytics, secondly. There's going to be so much data there, so really digging through that data, mining through that data to help improve the insights that are gathered from that information through a series of dashboards. And then lastly, performance management. One of the things I mentioned earlier is that Treasury is not just looking for an accounting of the funds and how they're spent, but really help ensuring that the programs that are being implemented are achieving its goals. So there can be various KPIs that can help you monitor that to improve accountability and compliance. And then slide nine, just giving a few examples of some of those, actually, slide 11, Anna. So just walking through some of these, the different areas that we support end-to-end, and a couple of examples of some of those projects. The first is where we've assisted some of our clients around the guidance on what is the actual funding that's available, how those sources can be used, and how are similar state and local governments using such fundings. South Carolina is an example of one of those engagements. Second, we've assisted agencies and departments on creating different types of implementation plans and procedures to execute their intended programs. Loudoun County is an example of that. Thirdly, assisting providing different types of strategic guidance on how you leverage the funds to meet the different needs and goals of those funds. For example, we helped a county in New Jersey around their small business application process. And then lastly, we've assisted clients in evaluating and minimizing their different performance and compliance risks around the funds and executed different types of protocols and procedures to help them meet the rule reporting requirements of Treasury, such as the state of Colorado. And then lastly, you know, if you go to slide 12, and I wanted to pause to respect the questions. Just wanted to summarize some things around KPMG. You know, in terms of our resources, we would be, we would bring a mix of CPA folks, JDs, and regulatory folks, along with project management professionals to help keep things organized and coordinated. And then lastly, technology professionals to help with the deployment of the process and the application, as well as making sure there's the right security in place. Secondly, we have local Boston office, and we have a number of folks in the Northeast, as well as a deep bench across the country, so that we can bring the right folks to help you based on your needs. And then we would bring SMPs on any particular topic areas as relevant. So for example, one of the funding areas is around infrastructure versus other things that are more public health. We try to turn to those folks that really understand the subject matter to make sure, particularly around the performance, meaning the performance of those projects, that those things are being met. We believe we're a partner transformation. We're not just there to help check the box or answer the mail, but really partner with yourselves in long-term success and serving those constituents that we know you want to serve. We're invested. We don't want to just answer the mail, but we want to provide those additional values as we deem fit. So we're able to help you reduce any staff workloads and things of that nature as we know how much this is with these different monies and the requirements associated with them. Technology, everything we do with our MTX partners, we use technology to make things faster, more effective. Ease of starting up, there's a lot that needs to happen in a short period of time over the next several years. So we work closely to ensure that ramp-up is efficient and effective as possible. Driving inefficiency, driving efficiencies, you know, we really push our teams to work to be as efficient as possible to help drive success in the program. And then lastly, independence and conflicts. KPMG is not the auditor of Norfolk County or any of its cities or towns, so there is no actual perceived conflicts as we're assisting in reviewing the funding applications and so forth of your constituents. I'll pause there, see if you have, the Norfolk County team has any questions.
Thank you, Anthony. I am, we do have questions, I believe. I'm going to open it up to my fellow commissioners, Commissioner Stady or Commissioner Collins, and we'll go from there. Commissioners.
Yeah, thank you. Let me jump in, if I may, Peter. Thank you, Anthony. That was an excellent presentation. I'm going to go a little off-script, maybe, if that's okay, because I think in terms of the questions we were going to vet you with, many of them have answered by your excellent presentation. I'm concerned about a couple of things, though, and I think we all share this as well. What's the pricing going to be, for example, for your services? Secondly, for an organization as strong as you, there's a likelihood that perhaps you may be retained by other entities, county or otherwise. Can you guarantee that Norfolk County will be served with the same level of service you're displaying this morning? And third, I know it's multi, here's my third question. There seems to be the Delta variant is ramping up. We have a fear of COVID, you know, COVID-2, shall we say. What impact could that be on your organization to provide the services that we need to get us through the next three, four, or five years? Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. The first question, I think, was related to pricing. We have a rate card with the Commonwealth of Massachusetts on several different backdrop contracts. There's the PRF 78 and the PRF 61, for example. They are, there's different rate structures based on types of services. So depending on your need, there's a rate card that can be utilized, and we could work to be flexible on what those particular needs are and what works for you. So that, and that contract applies not just for the Commonwealth, but also for any counties or locals. The second thing was related to, well, I think I may have missed the second one, but I know one question was around the Delta variant.
Oh, second one, second one, if I could, Anthony, was that you're an excellent organization. Obviously, there's a likelihood you might be retained by other counties who are undergoing the same thing as we are. What guarantee or assurance do we have that as maybe perhaps your clientele grows, we're going to get the same level of service? Would you be assigning a specific person or contact in your organization to work with John Cronin and us on a regular basis and Treasurer Bellotti? How would you handle that?
Yes, we absolutely would. We would have folks on the leadership level that would be, that we would bring their experiences from other places and also provide the guidance and leadership to get the team assigned for Norfolk County in particular, so that you don't miss a beat. Also, between our MTX partners and ourselves, we have a deep bench of folks across the country that can help. And I think that allows more flexibility with or without COVID to do a lot of these things virtual. And I think even just from our experiences, because I've, most of my experience is working with third-party provider oversight engagements. A lot of stuff that we've done in the past in person, going across the state and doing webinar, doing presentations, we've been able to do that virtually, and almost everyone's been able to accommodate that. So we're willing to be as flexible as possible to serve Norfolk.
Hey, thank you very much. Excellent job. Thank you.
Anthony, if I could just jump in, Commissioner, the work that we've done with the state of Colorado now, since September, October of 2020, has been entirely virtual. So we've taken some measures to make sure that we have strong communication with them and their stakeholders, having weekly meetings with our key stakeholders, as well as frequent touchpoints, as well as our contacts, webinars as well, presentations. So we have done this in a virtual environment. The nature of our work there has been entirely through COVID, COVID-1, as you said, now that with COVID-2 potentially happening. So we do have experience conducting these, you know, these types of engagements and this work in a completely virtual world. So we've, you know, been able to take those tactics and refine them now over three engagements with the state of Colorado. So we're very close to being a very well-oiled machine, you know, to translate that over to our, to our future engagements as well.
Thank you, Francis.
I may, I may just touch a little bit on the MTX side, from the technology side. Since early 2020, we have deployed all virtually, virtually all solutions around contact tracing, vaccine management, and childcare, various different grants distributions, including rental assistance and childcare provider grants and statewide Utah grants, all virtually, very successfully.
Okay, I'm all set, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, great. Commissioner Collins?
You know, I thought it was a terrific presentation also, and Dick, I liked your questions. I think I'm good for right now.
Thank you.
Okay. Anthony, what challenges do you anticipate in developing and managing these programs? Kind of that it's so new to us. What do you foresee as the pitfalls, so to speak, are?
Yeah, thanks, Commissioner Chairman. I'll start, and if anyone has anything on my team to add, please feel free to do so. I think one of the biggest challenges we've seen with some of these types of endeavors is is making sure that that information and guidance is out there as early as possible and really providing a lot of the hand-holding, particularly in this case for the cities and towns, as I believe that's where you're, the direction you may be headed. You know, so really making sure folks understand the guidance. I mean, it's evolving every few weeks, it seems. And making sure, you know, the other piece is the data, you know, helping folks understand they have the data that can actually not just track the accounting, because that's a challenge in ourselves, even working with some states, but also tracking how are these programs being, you know, how are they, how are they occurring? What's the, how do you monitor the outputs of the programs, for example? And there's a lot, these funds are a lot different than the previous funds. These are more investment-based, meaning it's not just to plug in some gaps and holes, but it's for some longer-term investments to help the locals and so forth be successful. So how do you measure how are these communities being served and benefiting over time? So to summarize that, if anyone has anything to add, I'm sorry. Data and guidance, particularly for any of the subrecipients.
Right, and this is Jeff Thomas with KPMG. I was joining a few minutes delayed, but I've been a project lead in Colorado and Loudoun County, which we referenced earlier. And I'd say more, to add to Anthony's point, when we worked with those clients, they both created sub-grant programs where they took portions of their coronavirus relief fund money and made it available to other units of government. And a real challenge is uniformity. Just making sure that program on the front end is designed in a way that you have the confidence that you're getting from each of the recipients, each town, the same amount of information. To Anna's point, that they've been trained equally, or, you know, that you identify, we'll do a risk score, for example, among subrecipients on the front end, so that we know which towns or other units of government might need a little bit more hand-holding on certain areas. Just so you have the confidence that you're going to get from each of those subrecipients, the information you need to be compliant with the Treasury, since ultimately you're the responsible party. And to Anthony's point, it was hard with CRF to do that to begin with, as with this coronavirus recovery fund, fiscal recovery funding, being more investment-oriented and tracking policy as well as just dollar spend. That uniformity is going to be more challenging. And so it really requires, I think, a much more exacting approach on the front end to make sure those applications and the information intake that you get from towns and counties and cities and other units of government really speaks to all those information sets the Treasury's put out, and you're getting it in enough time to be able to report it, but more importantly, to look at, look for problems. You know, if there's any bottlenecks or any compliance issues at the subrecipient level, you can proactively address those in real time so that you're not getting unpleasant surprises towards the end, as we're trying to wrap up and be audit-ready. So I think that's a challenge, but it's doable, you know, to have self-awareness on the front end. You just, I think, you need a good thorough system that's aware of those rules and a machine, if you will, that figures out how to make sure all those subrecipients are on a, even a playing field for performance as possible. Anthony?
Thank you.
I just wanted to add, as what Anthony and John just shared, like, the guidance is changing. That is a challenge, but we are nimble and flexible to really quickly incorporate in the technology solution so that it is, it is in one place. And speed to delivery is the key to there, like, we are fast and nimble to address that concern.
Mr. Chairman, could I ask one more question?
Certainly. Commissioner Stady.
Thank you very much. Thank you, sir. Anthony, again, to you first, I guess, and foremost. I'm assuming, hopefully correctly, that obviously you're going to work with the commissioners, since we're the appointing authority. And obviously, Treasurer Bellotti, I'm very pleased to hear that you've already had communication with him, and you seem to have a fundamental understanding of what's happening here, which is great. But I would also expect, and I hope I'm correct, that your firm will be willing to work with the 28 membered cities and towns and other organizations that may be applying. Certainly, there's a lot of misunderstanding, and not everyone really has a clear picture, including ourselves. You know, at this point, it's evolving. But I would expect your firm would not only be But I would expect your firm would not only be, like you said, checking the box by helping out those towns. Is that something you anticipate being able to do? And again, is that something that we'd have to look at your card-on-file as a menu? Or is that, is that something you provide?
We, we would assume that that would be built into an endeavor like this, depending what exactly it needs. So I mean, on the application process side, for example, we've worked closely with MTX to do a lot of that initial vetting of the applicants. We've also been doing the trainings. Most of my engagements over the years, we've actually worked with hundreds or thousands of different types of providers. So we're very accustomed to working with them and their different needs. And some might be, you know, some might be very sophisticated, others may need help with some things that are, you know, more fundamental. So we're willing to work individually with them to ensure they have the right guidance and knowledge as, as well as helping with the intake and, and, you know, review of the different types of data and information they provide.
Okay, I want to clarify one thing. And you did say you don't, you have not performed any audits in the county of the 28 towns. So therefore you have no conflict?
Correct. I checked yesterday with our audit partner. We, we have a standard process where we would run those checks anyway, once there's a known list. But at this time, we don't audit any of those folks. County is obviously as well as any of the cities or towns.
Okay, good job. Thank you, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm all set.
Anthony, if I may, I just want to add one, one, a little bit more detail to the resource question and the onsite question. Just two things. I mean, we, we would deploy a dedicated team to Norfolk and it's not our mode of operation to switch out resources. Now, obviously, sometimes things occur, you know, folks leave the firm and whatnot. But I just want to make sure that, you know, our, our intent would be to deploy a dedicated team that's working with the commissioners and all the stakeholders that Commissioner Stady just mentioned on this program. And then secondly, being clearly in this world, we, we try to maximize virtual meetings and whatnot. But I mean, we, we have a large number of projects today, just so you know, that we're actually working onsite with our clients. It's all dependent on client needs and client expectations. I mean, clearly, the, the Delta variant and where that goes is going to, you know, you know, could potentially have some impact there. But we are, I mean, if Norfolk wants some info, in-person meetings and whatnot, you know, we're, we're doing that today. Just I just want to make sure that you understood that, that it doesn't have to be 100% virtual.
I think, I think the term was handholding. Someone mentioned your team and that's something we're definitely interested in. And the team is your team. We'd be looking to meet, you know, the captain, so to speak, to go through person, but we realize this is a multifaceted operation, so to speak. I think round one is coming to a close now. If you have one other question or comment, we'd like to hear it and then we're going to move on. But you'll be hearing from us either way, anyway. Okay. Okay, well, we want to thank you for taking the time and I thought the presentation was excellent. I know the other commissioners did too. I can tell by their questions. And as I said, we will be back in contact with you. We're trying to keep this on somewhat of a schedule. The newness sometimes makes it difficult, but we're just getting started. But we're committed entirely to this project. So thank you very much.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you so much.
Nice job this morning.
Thank you.
Take care.
Okay. Good afternoon. Good morning. Good morning. How are you? I bet you're Clifton Lawson. That is correct. Company. Good morning. Okay, we're right on time. Why don't you sit right down?
Will you have folks joining you virtually?
Just me. Unfortunately, the person who's going to join me is sick today, so she's decided to.
Introduce yourself. Off we go. I'm Commissioner Shea. I'm the chairman. We have Commissioner Collins on the call and Commissioner Richard Stady on the call. And this is John Cronin, our county director, who you may have had some contact with. And this is 10:45 appointment with Clifton Lawson.
Do you have an electronic deck to share so our other commissioners can participate in the presentation?
And your name, sir.
I did not. I do not have it with me. I can forward it after the fact and leave hard copies as well. My name's Chris Rogers. I am the managing principal of CLA's state and local government practice. And actually, I may have given you mine. I have the first one. Sure, that's the. Maybe not. Put that back to you. It was me for one second, sorry.
So Commissioner Stady, Commissioner Collins, we'll have hard copies available for your, your use following the meeting.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you.
My apologies for that. If it's, if it helps, what I can do too is just send an electronic copy when I get back to my office.
That'd be appreciated.
Great. You're welcome. So what I'd like to do is, before we get into it, is just give you a little overview of CLA and who we are. And we'll spend a lot of time on it and talk about our government practice. Then we'll talk about the scope that I'm talking about today. Obviously, that can be changed as we go through the process. And then go through our relevant experience and our work plan. And obviously, I know, I know you're going to have questions as we go through this. So getting right into it about CLA. So one of the things that we live by is our promise, which is to know you and help you. We are all in on state and local government. We always have been and we always will be. One of our strategic advantages is that our firm is based on industry specialization. In other words, we're not service-driven. We're not going after audit work or consulting work. We're all about state and local government and that, that looks different, whether it's assurance, outsourcing, consulting. But we have professionals that specialize in that. As a matter of fact, we have over 400, 400 professionals across the country who specialize in that. We have about 35 locally that specialize in state and local government. Our firm is about $1.1 billion in revenue. We have over 7,400 employees. We've been in business over 60 years. And we serve over 4,000 governments. We have 130 locations across the country. So we're, we're a national firm. We are, we are what's referred to as a top eight firm in revenue. Obviously, you have your big four and then we come in eighth after that. So looking at CLA's government practice from a national standpoint, as I said, we, we, as a firm, we have over 7,400 people and they're supporting the state and local government team when needed. Over 400 professionals, but I think the most, from a national standpoint, what is so valuable is that we're at the seat, we're, we're at the table on a lot of committees. So for example, the Government Audit Quality Center Executive Committee, we have a seat on that. Well, we meet with the GAO Office of Management and Budget. They have a meeting every week ever since the pandemic, because of all the funding issues, whether it's coronavirus relief fund, ARPA money that's out there. We also participate in National Association of State Comptrollers, Accountants, excuse me, Auditors and Treasurers. We're part of the COVID-19 Accountability Workshop. We audit the most states in the country, so we're a big player in that market and they, they allow us to be at that table because, because we're so deeply embedded in the states and state agencies.
That includes Massachusetts.
That does include Massachusetts, starting this year. From a local standpoint, your local team, we've been doing this for over 20 years and I've been doing it ever since the beginning of my career in 94, so over 25 years now. All I've done is state and local government, audit and consulting. As I said, we have 35 professionals that are based out of Lexington or Quincy that spend 100% of the year on state and local government. The local team works with over 80 a year. It was probably more like 100 this year. And that's broken out between audit work, which is typically 50 audits per year. And then the other 50, 30 to 50 engagements per year relates to consulting and outsourcing. And that's really why we're here today. We have a separate team that all they do is consulting and outsourcing services for municipalities in Massachusetts. We have about 10 people that are on that team. So that's just a little background of CLA from a national perspective, as well as a local perspective. So understanding of the scope, what, I laid this out based on the email that I got and I might have took, I might have taken a little bit further than maybe what you were looking for, but it's more of a full turnkey solution for you, meaning from, from start to finish, from the time an application comes in to the time it gets paid out the door at Norfolk County. So the scope is really develop an ARPA application software solution for your member tax. Provide grant compliance component for each of the applications, which makes a lot of sense. Assist with the reporting requirements as directed by the US Treasury. And working closely, obviously, with county officials and personnel, and just the overall administration of the funds. And then I think one of the most important things is reviewing the cost for eligibility and compliance with the act. So just from a, so that's the scope that I've laid out here based on the email that we had. Relevant experience from a national standpoint, we've done a lot of large projects. Not exactly the same, but what it was, was it, this was like the California Housing Finance Agency, Minnesota Housing Finance Agency had to do with rental assistance monies. So we brought the resources to the table, the solution to the table, and we assisted them get that money out to the constituents. Pinellas County, Jefferson County, Montgomery County, Maryland. Our relevant experience in Massachusetts as it relates to ARPA is just starting, as you can imagine. We've, we have Plymouth County and I believe you've had conversations with Tom O'Brien, Treasurer down there. We've also signed up, as you can see, City of Medford, City of Melrose, Town of Acton and the City of Woburn.
The projects in those four local communities, are they exclusively ARPA curse?
Those are just the ARPA ones, but in the past, we, we, last year, we worked on coronavirus relief reporting as well as the female reporting that was required. I'm not, I'm not 100% sure if we did that for all four of these, but we did them for many communities in Massachusetts. And I'll just skip the next slide. Let's go to the, go to the work plan. So a, a, as we're looking at this, obviously, we're going to, we'll meet with officials and we'll, we'll finalize the scope and engagement and what it is you want. But what we want to bring to the table is really a software platform that will bring the application in. And as part of the requirement of filling out the application, we're addressing the compliance requirements that are related to it, as well as building a system for reporting. The reporting required by ARPA is pretty significant, very robust, in my opinion. And I think if we can build, I know if we can build it through the application process, we're going to be able to, to do the reporting a lot easier, save time, as well as have data analytics over it from a software standpoint. We would then obviously roll out the ARPA program, go live. And then, and this is how it's, I'll, I'll go to what we're doing for Plymouth County is that we're going to be the first stopgap to say, is this compliant or eligible? And then they're, they're putting in different processes on what's going to happen after that. But we would take the first review of that application, make sure they submitted, number one, all of the documents required, I should say uploaded. Review it for compliance and then approve it from our standpoint to move forward in the process. And then the, the end game is the reporting that's required under ARPA. And again, the way that we're, we're building this software platform is that we're going to be able to do the reporting right out of, right out of the application. And I think we're going to be able to download it directly to US Treasury. Bottom line is, we'll be able to format it in a manner that the reporting will be much easier. And obviously, throughout the entire process, there will be continuous communication. That's one thing we feel is obviously critical to any successful engagement, is the upfront and timely communication with, with the commissioners, treasurer, whoever else may be involved in this project. From a key team member standpoint, I will be heavily involved. Again, I've been, been performing, I've been doing this for 26 years in Massachusetts. Hannah York, who was supposed to be here today, she is our consulting principal, runs our consulting outsourcing practice in Massachusetts. She's got 20 years of experience. And then Sean McGoldrick, who's a consulting director, he has 16 years of experience. And other than a brief stint, he went to the town and made it as the assistant comptroller for a year. He's been working with me for 15 of those years. So you, and the county will also have access to our COVID-19 response team, which we put together last, was it March of '20, to deal with, you know, at the time, the CRF that came out, making sure that we had the right people on the right engagements who understood the CRF. Same thing here, we understand ARPA and all the requirements. And I think that's the, the great thing about CLA is that it's not just, now it's just not myself, Hannah and Sean. We have a whole host of resources we can go to throughout the, the term of the engagement. So with that, I know, I know you have questions, so I, I can, I'll stop my presentation. All I'd like to say is that, you know, CLA is here to serve you, so.
Okay, thank you, Chris. I'm going to open it up to my fellow commissioners and myself. And we do have some questions and we can wrap it up and we'll go from here. So Commissioner Stady, do you have any questions?
Sure, I'll, I'll start, Mr. Chairman. I was going to just ask a couple of questions off our list here, too, if I may. What's, can you confirm that your firm has the capacity to provide this level of service? And understand that this is going to be something that's going to take, oh gosh, you know, what, four or five, perhaps, you know, longer years? Because it's spread out. How do you confirm to us your ability to handle it? You know, with that kind of a deadlines and those kind of goals?
Yeah, and I'll, I'll go back to the resources that we have actually in the state of Massachusetts that focus solely on consulting and outsourcing. We have nine or 10 people at all times that are committed to doing this.
Okay. The other thing I had a concern about, and there is a chance that there could be a second wave of COVID. You know, the Delta variant seems to be ramping up, unfortunately. Could that have any effect on your ability to deliver the services we need and to work with our cities and towns and us and Treasurer Bellotti to get this done?
No, from a remote, if we were to go back, you know, to that situation again, I have, we have no issues with the remote piece. We performed all of our audits last year locally, virtually. And nationally, we, we actually performed audits of states virtually. So I'm very confident that if that were to happen again, it's not going to hold us up at all.
Did you perform any audits for any municipal towns in Norfolk County at present?
Not at present. We did perform the, we had, we had the town of Norfolk for about 20 years and they decided to switch this year, just due to we've been there for 20 years.
All right, that's it for now. Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Welcome. Thank you.
Commissioner Collins?
Joe, I'm going to steal your question. What challenges do you anticipate in developing and managing this program?
I think the greatest challenge, if it's anything like CRF, is the change sometimes of the frequently asked questions in US Treasury and guidance. Because right now, you know, we've had, what, four versions of it so far, three or four versions of it. There will be more versions. The other thing that is a challenge is that the compliance supplement related to the uniform guidance and the requirements that will be under this program has not been issued yet. So I think the, the information that's coming out, out of Treasury, and it's understandable, right? Because this is all fast and furious. It may not be final and we're still waiting on the, you know, we have the interim final rule. We don't have the final rule yet. So honestly, I think that's, that's our biggest challenge.
Thank you. Well, I'm good, Joe.
Thank you. Chris, you spoke about your team here, your local team. You know, the newness of this to us leads me to ask, are these the folks we'll be dealing with? Is there a captain of the team, so to speak? And, you know, we, our captain's County Director, John, John Cronin. And, you know, how can we, can we rely on that? And will we be dealing with the same people? I mean, give or take.
I will be the captain of the team.
Okay.
Okay. But that is my team. So that's not to say that.
You don't add or delete. I understand.
That's correct. We're, we're not adding or deleting.
We don't need 10 people at all. I mean, you may need them, but.
No, but this is what I, I told Tom. I'm like, you got an issue on Friday night at 10 o'clock, you're calling me. That's, so I'm the primary contact and then we'll take it from there.
Hopefully, that doesn't increase.
And when you're dealing, you know, with the newness of it.
That's right. That's right. Yeah, I mean, I think the biggest thing, right, is getting the program stood up and what it's going to look like. And then, and then you get into a rhythm. And that's what we found during the CRF, that's what we found on some of the larger national projects we've done. It is a lot of work to get it done upfront on both sides of the table. But once it's up and running, now it's known, right? It's, it's not the unknown, we understand how it works. So I think in the beginning, there's, there'll be a lot of work, but I think once we get it stood up and running, I think it'll go very, I know it'll go very smooth.
John. Chris, two questions. On the work plan you provided, meet with county officials to finalize scope. Does CLA envision that meeting to be some form of training where the boundaries of the, of the grant and the purpose area of the grant are made known for decision makers and local officials to get a running start on how their applications should fill out? Importantly, what they should try to avoid doing. Is it a training opportunity, is it more than just communicating, Chris?
It can be, 100%. What, what we're trying, sorry, you know, I'll just expand on that a little bit, John. What we're trying to do with the application is build it out so it's, lack of a better phrase, dummy proof, right? Like, it's clear on what needs to be provided, but to your point, I think there is a training opportunity.
During the course of the, of the grant, will communities and individuals who are preparing grants have access to a call center or some media where they can get answers to questions while they're preparing the information?
Yes, absolutely. Don't think we're going to stand up a call center for this, but there will be an email that will effectively go to myself and Sean and probably the COVID response team, the national COVID response team. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. You, you, we, you feel you have the capacity and all the resources.
Absolutely.
For a high level of service and accountability, that's what we're looking for. Being in the top eight, I saw, I guess, answers most of those kinds of questions, but again, due to the newness and.
Right.
We're always, we're always discussing this with other counties, particularly Plymouth, because they went through it a little more than we did. We didn't go through the COVID, we, we joined with the state, did their program, so. Not that. We're not independent, we are, but this is a different program, so we've ought to take it and pass it on to cities and towns, which is our. And we're on a calendar here, John, as kept us, trying to keep us on a calendar. This is the first big day devoted about three or four weeks ago. And we're looking to wrap up this portion of it reasonably quick. I don't know if it's going to be wrapped up today or tomorrow or next week, but probably before the month of August is out, we, we need, we've got, we've set an ambitious calendar about letting the cities and towns know. This is our first real big step is getting in the county program, so.
Right. You know, there's, there are, receive the money, right?
Yes, first half, 68 minutes, 68 minutes on it. In the bank.
Just a.
Treasure of the audience.
It's in the bank. There are reporting requirements at the end of August, just, just to let you know.
That's a good point.
It's through July 31st, but due August. Just want to point that out.
Okay, great.
I'm not trying to rush your decision, but I don't want you to miss it.
We're not gonna rush it, but we're aware of it, and, and again, we're we have a fairly ambitious calendar, we're gonna try to stick to it. Okay, last call, any other questions, commissioners or anyone? John, for Chris Rogers from Clifton Lawson. All right.
Thank you very much for your presentation, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Joe. No, she's not.
Okay. Chris, my number's a little bit.
You have your cards.
I got your card here.
All right, and give me, give me an hour or so and I will. Just, whose card is this? John, do you have yours?
Sorry.
Right on the back.
Okay, yeah. And I'll email the presentation to you, does that make sense?
That makes sense.
Okay. Yeah, yeah, thank you.
We're sticking to our timeframe, this is pretty good for us.
Thanks, all the best.
All right, you as well. You as well.
Thank you, Chris.
You got it. Thank you, nice to meet you.
Ernst and Young, okay. We're a minute or two ahead, which is a good thing.
I'll take a, I'll take a brief break.
We're gonna take a one-minute break and then we're gonna continue on at 11:15 with Ernst and Young. Thank you.
Good morning, how are you?
Good, how are you? Hi, Stephen Tremblay. Hello, Stephen.
Hi, hi, Steve.
Pleasure, pleasure.
We're gonna put you over here. We're a little ahead.
That's good.
Kind of tight, but I'm sure.
We were just required for our rest.
I'm gonna have Deborah sit right here. You guys need a rest break before we start? I'm fine, but please, I'm right back, yes. Deborah, um.
Deborah, whatever you want.
I'll sit wherever you want me to sit.
Sit over here with Stephen, Deborah, I'm okay.
Oh, nice to meet you.
I miss, I miss the musical chairs of conference rooms.
Oh, are you guys so jealous?
Soon. I'll come visit soon.
I was giddy this morning, just for the record, I was giddy.
Love it.
Ready to drive over here and be face to face.
We're on a one-minute break, but.
Yeah, they're taking a break.
Right on time.
Seems like you've had a busy morning, so.
I would hate a agenda, I saw that agenda, I thought that's ambitious.
It's ambitious, but we're, we're, we're right on time, we're, we're happy, we're halfway. We're on the 50-yard line of today. This is a big day.
How long have you guys been back in the office?
About four weeks, but we're, we have all the options going.
You guys have been back four weeks, you've been there all along.
Yeah.
I've been trying to chair the meetings from here and here. Some days, all three of us are here, but we don't, you know, we, we, we do the very best we can. We were happy to get out of remote, but we're not fully out of it, we're getting nervous, we're gonna go back.
I know.
I think that, you know, although this room is small, we, we seem to get more accomplished in the in-person meetings, but hey, remote's probably here to stay, I know, I don't.
I know, I feel like I should get like a little selfie, if you guys don't mind. My friends on the screen.
Right.
Yeah. Did you wait? Sorry, am I like a kid, Melissa, am I embarrassing you?
No, no, not at all.
I couldn't tell. So whenever you're ready.
I'm gonna wait for direct, for one or two questions, I'll introduce them, they're on the Zoom, and then off we'll go.
Okay, sounds good. I need the June post.
It's all right.
Oh, maybe on the camera, maybe.
Oh, it might have bounced back from the camera.
Okay, we're back on the record here for our 11:30, 11:15 interview with Ernst and Young. I'm going to introduce them and ask them to introduce themselves, actually, and then off we'll go. So good morning.
Good morning. So I'm Deborah Cameron Heinz, I'm a partner at Ernst and Young with responsibility for our work across the Commonwealth of Mass. So I cover all of our government entities in Massachusetts. Bring an enormous, I hate to even say the number out loud, 30 years of experience, starting my career in the White House Office of Management Budget. So I've worked at every level of government. And so we have a team here that's got a broad set of experience and backgrounds. And as part of the discussion, I think they'll introduce themselves, if that's okay, unless we need it recorded for the record. Also, we've went ahead and prepared written answers to your questions, which I'll hand out so that you can make sure in the interest of time that you, you know, so you're not like writing notes, but you can be listening or asking questions along the way. So you can have a written answer and then.
One extra copy because the, the two commissioners.
Mr. Chairman, John, could that speaker, I don't know who's speaking, could that person introduce himself? There's no camera on here, I don't know who's speaking. I've got the remote people, but I'm not, is someone speaking at the moment?
Yes, can you see me here?
Now I can see, I'm sorry, I lost you there, okay.
This is Commissioner Stady and Commissioner Pink.
Get blurred in there, I'm sorry, I couldn't see who you were.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
All right, thank you.
We've also prepared a placemat, which goes over our methodology and has pictures and names. One of the people who's on the placemat that we've provided is Jane Steinmetz. She's our office managing partner in Boston and engages with the Commonwealth of Mass at lots of different leadership levels. Serves on a number of different commissions and around town, and so you might have seen her name. So I want to make sure you see that she's on there, so just that out. Okay, so I think to get started, we'll turn it over to Barb, right? And you'll maybe introduce yourself if you so, that's okay. Again, just in the interest of time, I don't know, I know you have a lot of 15 minutes for presentation and 15 minutes for questions. We're hope, hope, you know, open to doing whatever you want or asking questions along the way. All right, go ahead, Barb.
Okay, Barb, hi, good morning, everyone, it's a, it's a pleasure to, to talk with you. So Barb Lambert, I'm a partner in our forensic practice, which is where our federal claims work sits. And, and just as some background, my, my experience and our experience on the, on in supporting state and local clients is really grounded in the, in the decades that we have of supporting clients with, with federal disasters such as those that are funded with, with FEMA funding and, and the tens of billions of dollars that we've, we've supported disasters such as hurricanes and, and others. And, and over the past 18 months, my experience along with, with Amy, Melissa and, and others here on the team has been working with our state and local governments to help them with federal funding related to the, to the pandemic. So helping them administer and monitor programs with funding like the coronavirus relief funds under CARES. And now, of course, fiscal recovery funds under the American Rescue Plan Act. So what I thought I would do is just briefly touch on the services that we offer that, I think Deborah passed out that, that placemat. And, and then I'll hand it over to, to my colleagues to have them talk about some specific service areas as well, so we can try to touch on the, the different questions that, that you raise. We, we've worked closely together to try and administer these, these fully integrated programs so that includes areas like deploying the technology platform, leveraging Microsoft. And Amy will talk to that in, in a minute and can help with questions on that. With my background in compliance and the federal grants, helping with the design of programs, reviewing applications, otherwise making sure the programs are being conducted in accordance with, with federal requirements such as CFR 200 and, and of course, US Treasury guidance in, in this case. I'm also, Stephen is there with, with you in person, who's one of my colleagues locally in, in Boston that also has some deep expertise in the public sector in the, in the compliance area as well. So it's great to, great to have him locally. We also have Melissa on the phone who can talk to the areas where we can help from a program strategy and allocation approaches, which is where we are supporting a number of our clients across the country. And of course, we also have customer service and call center capabilities. So we've worked closely together as a team to try and, and deliver these on an integrated basis. Before I pass it over to, to Amy, in terms of your, your, some of the questions, I think in the message we received around compliance, just that would highlight and, and example with, or two, we do have experience with the administration and the monitoring of grant programs that include subrecipient funds that are flowing down to localities either from the, from the state or from the, from the county. This includes projects currently where we're both supporting subrecipients and recipients on kind of both sides of those arrangements. We also have done large-scale work over time. I mentioned, you know, we kind of grew up on the, on the FEMA side pre, pre-pandemic. And so work such as supporting some emergency management functions of, of states with the monitoring of subrecipient agreements as they flow disaster funding down to their different localities. Just to give you some, some examples, we have, we have colleagues from an SMR perspective that are former OIGs from the federal government that, that helps support us in making sure we bring the, the right compliance expertise to the, to the table. So let me, Amy, let me pass it to you and let you maybe help comment on some of the technology-related aspects that were, were highlighted in the questions with EY Grants Accelerator.
Sure, thanks, Barb. Hi, everyone, my name's Amy Fenstermacher, and I helped design our EY Grants Accelerator. Very creative name, I know. And we have been using it over the last just about year and a half to help with the distribution of federal funds related to COVID-19 relief. So went through CARES, went through Consolidated Appropriations Act with the first round of ERAP, and now we're supporting clients with ARP as well, so we've sort of run the full gamut. The solution as it stands right now is an existing baked solution. And what we do is we work with each of our clients to tailor it to the specific programs, initiatives, projects, and reporting styles that they need in order to run the program. So obviously, from the art perspective, there's a lot of prescriptiveness, right? With the list of performance metrics that we need, the measures that we need, the types of programs that are allowed to be run, expenditure categories, all of that good stuff. So we've already been working to bake that in and can bring much of that information and functionality as we step in with you working from day one. So sort of cumulatively, the Grants Accelerator operates in three spaces. So the first is a public-facing portal, which you would use potentially for an ERAP-style program where you have individual people or landlords applying for relief, but also for allowing potential subrecipients to apply to run a project through ARP or to submit their subaward reporting on a quarterly and annual basis. So all of that is available through the public-facing portal. Then the second piece is that we have an administrative workspace, which is what we call our sort of backend. And that's available to the people who are ultimately running and administering these programs. We can do that at multiple levels. So for example, in New Jersey, we're running a program with multiple counties and a city that are all working in the same space and also have invited nonprofits in to work with them to help administer the program. So all of them have their data segregated and, and protected by various permissions. We set up business units for them so they can only see what they're supposed to see. And ultimately, they're all working in the same space so that we have a unified data set and have the ability to report in a consistent and consolidated way across all of those various parties. So then, obviously, I've just alluded to it, the third component of the portal, of the, the accelerator is our reporting capability. All of this is built on the Microsoft Power Platform, which sits in the cloud, is resilient and scalable, is hosted in Microsoft's data center and is rated to hold sensitive data like PII, for example. I'll, I'll highlight just a couple of other things before I toss it over to Melissa to talk to you about strategy. And that is the breadth of programs that we've already supported through the Grants Accelerator. So I mentioned New Jersey, which is ERAP right now. And then we also have supported Hawaii for their childcare stabilization fund grants. We have a substantial amount of work with the state of Florida at the state and county and city levels in order to support them across, again, from CARES all the way through CAA and then ARP. And then we've also worked with Illinois, and I'm sure I'm forgetting a number of other states and counties. But I, I thought those were just useful ones to highlight. We have set up the portal so that we can make it public-facing completely and open and available to the general public in some parts. And then other parts can be set to invitation-only so that you can control access to it. For example, if it's intended to be for a limited subset of the general public to be able to apply or access it. And then from the reporting perspective, I think it's important to mention that obviously there's the federal mandatory reporting that you'll need to be responsible for. But there's also reporting, and Melissa will talk a lot about this from an outcomes perspective, there's also reporting to make sure that the money that you're spending does the job it's supposed to do, right? That we're measuring the strategic outcomes that you've set forth for the program. So the reporting also supports that. And that is something that you can make available on the public side of the portal or post in your other websites or, or as needed. So that can be exposed as appropriate for your transparency goals as well. Whew, sorry, that was, that was quite a rattle-off. So Melissa, I'll let you talk about the strategy and design for these programs. Whew, sorry. That was, that was quite a rattle off. So Melissa, I'll let you talk about the strategy and design for these programs.
Thank you, Amy. And just add to, we, we also can make available a demonstration of the, the tools as well. So it's not just a narrative, but, uh, can demonstrate them as well. And, um, I'm Melissa Glenn. I'm a partner in our strategy group, which is our strategy group overall is, is based in the Boston, in our Boston office. I fortunately was born in the county, um, but I'm happy just to be with you virtually today as well. And as Amy and Barbara alluded, what we've, we've worked tightly together as a team with our, um, ARP and our CARES support functions. We think of that overall in, in three phases of strategy, compliance and execution. And may think of it as strategy first, but I'm actually going last. So we've really kind of hit compliance and execution as well. But in many cases, the communities we've been working with, um, we've have been asked to help them think through the priorities um, as well as elements of, that comply in terms of thinking about revenue replacement and calculations around meeting those performance management type of reporting requirements that so far have come forward with the interim, um, rules that Treasury has put forth. And I know we're waiting for finalization and expect to have, um, more kind of templated reporting requirements. But there is, uh, a fair amount of performance driven reporting on that expectations. So many of the communities we've been working with have asked us to help them think through where they are in terms of their budget today, where they think they're going to be forecasted over the next few years to help them make prioritized decisions about which programs to fund. And then even within those programs, how much funding to allocate and how to go through the scoring process and to drive transparency around that. So when the public comes back and says, you know, you had a fantastic opportunity for economic recovery. How did you use these funds? Can feel as well armed as possible about making those decisions about which fund, what, what types of programs to invest in, how much to invest in, and how to show that those programs had an impact on the communities. So excited to, and do that work because it's not just about today and getting the funds out, but about thinking about the impact several years out. And I know that's really the intent of these funds. But at the same time, we really want to be as thoughtful and make sure this ties back with this, the county strategy as well as the municipalities that you're serving as well. So as we mentioned, you know, one of the things that we really enjoy about our EY team is that we have expertise, um, around so many of the programs that have been funded. So as Amy mentioned around childcare, we have, um, expertise in, in human services and childcare programs and healthcare programs in economic development. We have a team just focused in, on that and specializes in economic development exclusively. We have, um, folks who have expertise in infrastructure, water, sewer, broadband, um, and those kind of building projects. So they help to provide that kind of expertise to our core team as well as be available to, to you as you think about how to design programs and to draw upon that so that we make sure that the strategies you select are really informed by the latest thinking um, in public, private finance and procurement and government services. Many of our communities are looking at how do they invest in improving government services overall in technology as well as the infrastructure services. So much more we can dive into, but hopefully get you a sense of, you know, how we work as a, a comprehensive team. I think I'm sharing back to you, Deborah.
Yeah. So great. So, um, I think we are at, you know, our 15 minutes. So I want to turn it back to you to see if you have any questions.
I'm going to open it up to my fellow commissioners for questions, but any, anything and anything is worth discussing. Commissioners, I'm going to open it to you. Commissioner Stady?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, uh, very fine presentation, by the way. Couple of questions, if I may, Mr. Chairman. One is through you, of course, uh, the, the presentation mentioned, uh, dealing with some public sector projects, specifically emergency management. Could they elaborate a little bit briefly and tell me like what towns? You just said, you mentioned, you didn't mention any towns in Norfolk County. The second thing I had will be a follow up on that, but could you address that? Any, can you give me some towns you've worked with in Norfolk County on emergency management and projects like that?
So we don't have any work in Norfolk County today. We have two current Norfolk County residents on the team and myself included, but we have not done any Norfolk County specific work. The work, we've done a lot of the mad emergency management work in California and Texas, Florida, um, to name a few.
Out of state, but not, not.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Are you interested in hearing about the work we've done across the Commonwealth or just you were interested in Norfolk County specifically?
I'm really just focused on the county, the county.
Okay.
Thank you. I'm sure you, thank you. Uh, the second thing was, um, a couple of, uh, questions we're prepared to, the, uh, preparation to get this up and running, uh, can you give a timeline in terms of how fast, how soon you could get this project up and running to be used by our applicants? And, uh, working with, you know, Treasure of Lottie and our towns to, uh, be done. Can you talk about that a little bit?
All right, Amy, Amy, do enough. Yeah.
I can, I can give some, uh, illustrative examples of timeline. Obviously it's a little bit difficult not knowing the scope of the programs you're planning to run. Um, and so some more specifics would be helpful to give you a fine grain timeline. But I will tell you that from the perspective of sort of what we've done previously and sort of know to be true, we have stood up, uh, the, the portal capability with the appropriate sort of design programs with the application forms deployed, um, usually within around six weeks, maybe a little bit less depending on complexity. But I would assume that this would probably be closer to that six week timeline. And then typically what we do is, you know what, the, the guidance is changing. The situation is changing. We're going to see new things throughout this. So we continue to, uh, enhance and refine as we go. So that six weeks gets us up and running. And then typically we have additional releases of functionality, uh, additional reporting as we define all of our expected outcomes over the course of, of sort of the ensuing, you know, month or two and, and as guidance changes. But I, I think the, the six-ish weeks is probably the answer you were looking for.
Thank you. One last question quickly, if I could. What, um, is your firm, as far as you know, uh, conducting the audits in Norfolk County for any towns? And there could be, is there any possible conflict that you would envision?
No, we do not.
Okay. All right. That's it for now. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Collins?
I think I'm good. I thought it was a terrific presentation and Dick, I liked your questions quite a bit. I thought it was great.
Thank you.
Okay. I have a question, a couple. Um, what challenges do you anticipate? I mean, this is new to us. It's actually pretty new to you too, I guess.
Yeah, me and everybody, right?
Do you see any pitfalls or, you know, how would you be prepared for that?
So I'm going to turn it maybe over. Oh, go ahead.
And one thing that jumps, jumps right out is, you know, the guidance could change and evolve over time. So all of us have to remain a little agile, right? So, you know, over the course of time, we're going to have to expect that some of the guidance will change and we'll have to look at the portal, we'll have to look at the technology. Then, you know, we'll have to look at the other internal controls.
Yeah, that's it. I mean, that's a great point. Challenges we saw with FEMA, right, in Texas, for example, where some of those challenges with controls and making sure documentation is retained for the entire period. But Melissa or?
Yeah. Overall, one of the challenges that you may thought, find, and this is what we're hearing. I knew, um, been working with like the city of Chicago on the strategy behind how to use their funds. Is there's so much demand and having to make decisions about where you fund and what the priorities are can be a challenge and, and making sure that a lot of the need, the needs are, are met. The rationale is there for the types of funding that you put forth and, um, kind of making determinations on which programs to fund. There's, there are so many opportunities and I'm assuming across the municipalities, um, they have a, a great deal of interest and those may be competing interests that, that you'll have to wade through.
I could also maybe Melissa, um, you know, add two points from, from some of what we're seeing in other jurisdictions. And I think one would be in the spirit of the, of the changing guidance. Different localities, um, have had different impacts from the pandemic when it comes to revenue loss. And under the fiscal recovery funds, um, the usage of the funds can vary quite a bit depending on what your revenue loss has been. And then that picture, because they're taking, um, the revenue loss calculation at different points in time. You may have had a loss one year, but not in a different year. So I, I think that's one area that, that we're seeing in other jurisdictions where, um, uh, that, that has, has, is a challenge that is, is being focused on. I think the other is because under the, uh, under the CARES Act and under ARPA, there's so many different sources of funding. For example, the Emergency Rental Assistance Program. Um, you have funds that are flowing down to rental assistance, but you also have jurisdictions and states that are using legacy CRF funds or now ARPA funds to administer small business grants, individual assistance grants, and making sure the right steps from a programmatic perspective are in place to, um, limit the possibility of duplication of benefits and be ready for potential audits in the future. I think is the other area that's getting a lot of focus at the moment.
And I'll, I'll chime in.
Thanks, Amy.
I'll, I'll chime in and, and mention, uh, one of the challenges that we've seen is that delicate balance between speed. Because as, as far as the, as the public is concerned, right, every, everybody's got the money and they're not seeing it, right? So there's that discomfort of we need to start getting this out fast. We need to start getting relief to people who need it. While at the same time, the burden of compliance requirements is substantial. So having to set up a program that reduces your risk and then, uh, also gets the funds out responsibly vis a vis things like duplication of benefits is a, is a massive challenge. And it's a challenge at a technical level, at a strategic level, uh, and at a frankly, a communications and a PR level too, right? Um, so engaging the right partners to help message outwards, um, talking to the right people to make sure that you are, uh, sort of keeping your finger on the pulse of where the needs are. All of that becomes sort of a holistic challenge. So the, the way that we sort of operate in order to solve that problem is that it's, it's not a bunch of different teams and groups that are sort of bringing their separate value, right? So we're constantly talking to each other, constantly talking to you to make sure that Melissa's strategy team is, uh, providing a strategy that's going to make sense from a measurement and outcomes perspective, right? And that strategy that we're coming up with is compliant with the regulations. So making sure that all of these pieces sort of operate in tandem and are making all of our lives easier. So it's not just one piece that's successful. It's all of them as a whole that sort of elevate the program.
Yeah, it's a great.
You can tell I get very excited about this. This is something we're genuinely passionate about, about solving. It's a massive challenge and we, we want to make it successful.
Okay. Um, I have one more question, but I'm going to turn it over to Director Kron. You've got a couple of questions.
I do, very briefly.
We've got an idea. We'll go check.
Thank you. Um, first, I think it's for you, Deborah, regarding, um, the tools and methods for federal funds management. This is the back of your, uh,
Yes.
page here. And a customer care contact center. It's clear that EY is looking to, uh, stand up some kind of a customer care center. In the event that users of the program over the course of the life they grant have questions at any given time, how does that work? Is that an email system? Is it a call center? Is it EPQs? What are you doing to, what is that, what is that process? You could explain that. And part of that also is, does this include training? Will individual communities and stakeholders be exposed to EY's explanation of allowable expenses and programs under the grant? So a lot there, but if you could feedback.
Yeah. I mean, I would say so, yes, right? I mean, the scope of this is entirely up to really where you want to see it, like what are the needs of the community? So it can be scoped to include all of those things. Training is super important because in order to meet all of those expectations for compliance, training has to be part of it, right? And then the customer care also depends on the number of users or how you envision the support being given. I mean, we have a number of examples we could offer from how we've engaged with other communities. So I don't know if it's Amy or Barb for that in terms of that, do you have a range of how like Florida has, you know, executed customer care as opposed to another smaller community?
Yeah. So I, I, I think it's varied depending on the size of the needs, Deborah, to, to your point. I mean, we, we have launched true call centers with, you know, with being able to talk live to agents. If we're not talking about a very, you know, big pool and it's the, uh, you know, one person from each of the localities, our, our team could just work directly with them and, and call them if there's questions on their application. For, for example, there's also the ability, and Amy can add to this, within the technology tool to send comments directly back and forth in the, in the portal. If, for example, they're missing a document, that, that type of thing too.
Yeah, we've leveraged in, in some other cases, a lot of RP news, so it's like standard automation to, you know, set questions. The most frequent and then more, you know, complicated questions can get elevated.
So two other quick questions. Oh, thank you, pardon, Melissa. Go right ahead.
Sure. Thank you. So this really depends, you know, we have clients who, for example, like the city of Newark went live using their rental, you know, rental assistant program. That's a very large city with a lot of applicants. So that's going to demand a different set, scale for the call center and a contact support versus, you know, they want to do something for, uh, relief grant for artists. It's a much smaller pool and the application pool. So it really depends on the programs you want to set up. And that's where we work closely with you on designing the programs and providing guidance. Cause that really does have to feed into the way the, the Grant Accelerator is configured. And then thinking through all the controls and the support needs with that. So it's really going to be dependent on the programs, but we have the ability to go large or go very deep and specific.
So my, my other two questions are probably more towards Amy's world. Um, very briefly, Amy, if I'm looking at the example on this, the Emergency Rental Assistance Dashboard, if this was one of our grants, I'd be a little alarmed at the percentage of denied applications. I would think something went haywire on the front end for training. Would you share that opinion?
Yes, absolutely. That's, that's definitely demo data from our, our sample environments. That is not real data, but I totally agree with you. Not want to see that percentage.
You say there's a problem.
There, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So and, and I'll, I'll, I'll elaborate on that because I think the point you're getting at, right, is making sure that the technology is designed from the get go so that we don't see applications coming through and draining resources that fundamentally are ineligible, right? So we, we absolutely have, uh, we have the, the design and we have done it consistently that we set up, uh, pre qualification criteria through the portal. And then at each step of the application process, we have checks on the data that's being provided to maintain eligibility throughout. So the expectation is that by the time you get to the submission of an application, unless you have answered questions incorrectly and your documentation doesn't align with the questions that you've answered, you should not receive a, a surprise ineligible response. So it's only ineligible if there's something incorrect in the application process.
Second question, I don't mean to cut you off in the interest of time. Second question, regarding analytics, um, with respect to the 28 cities and towns that'll be making application through cycle of three to four years, does the accelerator have the capacity to examine the stat at the, 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 the daily status of each applicant? One of the concerns I think we all should share is that given the marketplace of all the projects that are eligible, everybody's going to be rushing towards the same contract opportunities. There's inevitably going to be baked in delays and concerns about whether or not a community is actually achieving the benchmarks of, of time and spending on their grant. Can the accelerator track and help us understand who's lagging?
Yes, uh, and, and that's a great thing that you've brought up. I love that you're already thinking about that. Uh, we have a couple of sort of progress report style, um, dashboards right now. So we have one that is, um, tracking the process of the actual review. So reviewer productivity and how long it takes to get through an application, evaluating the cycle times from submit to final decision or submit to payment. Um, and then we also have, um, a live link with the portal side so that we can expose changes in status of an application directly to the applicant themselves. So there's, there's a number of ways that you can do it in the administrator workspace and it's constantly checking live. Uh, and then we also have the ability to, to share that information. And typically what we do is we set up, uh, email notifications as well to notify of changes in status for applicants.
So like a workflow, Amy, would it be akin to like a workflow status? So you would see as it moves along?
We call it our pizza tracker. Yep.
Yeah, pizza tracker.
Thank you very much, Chairman. I'm set.
Okay. Um, I have a final question, I believe.
Okay.
I've asked everyone the same question, but since you so highlighted your team. Um, and this is the team. Who is the captain of the team? Or actually John is the captain of our team. Actually, John is the captain of our team, but is this the team we will be working with?
Yes.
From here on, I mean, of course, if someone leaves.
Yes, this is our.
We're not going to pass this off to another group.
No, that's my job is to make sure that you get this team. That's my job.
Something we're addressing.
Yeah.
Okay, one quick last call, Commissioners, if you have anything else for Ernst and Young.
Nice job.
Okay.
All set. Nice job.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time. Thanks. Great to meet you.
We're trying to keep them scheduled. They're getting this resolved in August. I mean, hiring. I tell you, next week, we're not taking a vote today. It would be zero, isn't it?
Can I take a picture?
We did give us a spot on the agenda.
Are you sure?
Yes.
We'll be back to you for sure.
I will email it to you.
Thank you very much.
Just because I scribbled on here, I want my notes to tell these guys.
If you have a question.
I do have it.
Do you need my contact information or you guys have it, right?
I think you earlier.
Yeah. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And thank you.
Now, where do you live?
I live in Cohasset.
Oh, nice town.
And Jane lives in Cohasset. We're neighbors and so. I was so excited when I caught your.
I'll give you the people in Cohasset.
Is that all right? Or is it we hate? You don't like us?
Sometimes I wonder why they don't, they're in the county, so it's.
We're kind of, it's like a weird little thing. In like what, the 17?
1917, no, 1917. It's a brief story, but Hyde Park and Jermecker Plain were part of North County. They were separate towns till 1918. So it was a contiguous from Galloway to Book Hall.
Right.
So they were annexed by Boss. They came out of North County, so they had to make a switch down down to Plymouth County somehow.
It was part of the switch. It's so funny because I always, when you look at the map, I always wondered about that.
You have to drag through Plymouth County to get back into North.
You do. And then the other thing is that, I mean, I honestly, I shouldn't say this, this is probably heresy to say, but like, it's so teeny tiny. It's so tiny.
It's the smallest in there, right behind you.
Is it, right?
It's a great town.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good luck. Okay, moving right along.
Mr. Chairman, you're a wealth of information.
Is Powers here?
No, you're a wealth of information. I never knew that about Cohasset.
Someone even had the story once that Joseph Kennedy had something to do with it. He lived in both and Cohasset, but I couldn't follow that through too well. Hello, folks, come on in. It's kind of tight here.
That's okay.
How are you?
Hi, Renee Davis.
How are you? Look, we're right on schedule. So we're happy about that. You make yourself.
Oh, that white table. One of the years last time. If your math tables are on here.
Okay. Commissioners, this is Jim Powers from Powers and Sullivan and Renee Davis from Powers and Sullivan. They are our fourth interview today, fourth and final, we're keeping it on the calendar, so thank you very much. What we're going to do, folks, is have you open up and then we'll go into questions. We have our team with us. This is Commissioner Collins in the middle and Commissioner Stadia on the right have joined us on Zoom. And to my right is John, John Cronin, who is the county director. And then we have the support people, Phil Buckley and Phil Iantowski here with us. So this is a regularly scheduled meeting for the purpose of interviewing applicants for administration of our ARPA funds. So we're going to turn it over to you.
Thank you, Joe. Well, thanks for the opportunity to present this morning as we go through this. We have a presentation, I'm sorry it wasn't. We don't obviously can't provide that as part of to the other Commissioners, but we can pass those out to everyone. And it's 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 what we're going to talk about, but it's more to keep us on track about what we're going to talk about as we go through.
Thank you.
Okay, so we're Powers and Sullivan, and you can have as many of these as you want. And our specialty is auditing governments in Massachusetts. We've been doing this for, you know, 30 plus years. We audit counties, we audit cities, towns. We we audit about 150 different local communities, school districts, counties, et cetera, every year in Massachusetts. So everything that we're going to talk about today, especially when we think about the CARES Act and what has already gone, you know, as a predecessor to this, we've been dealing with this with Massachusetts communities as we go through. A lot of the compliance requirements are about the same as you go through. But obviously, the county has the unique opportunity now, not looking at the state being managing these particular funds to make sure that the process and the procedures you put in place are all guaranteed to allow your member, your communities to spend the money the way they want to, but also to ensure compliance with the statute, the laws, the interim regulations as we go through. And today we're going to hopefully talk to you about why our skills, knowledge, expertise is ideal to assist you in performing that particular function and as we go through. And a lot of the communities, as you find that we already audit, the idea 28 communities, we have it later in the presentation. We audit 10 every year. And if you take a look at the numbers, that represents about $70 plus million out of the 137 million. And so we'll we'll be interactive with everybody as we go through. And Renee and I are going to jump right back in, et cetera, as you go through. Do you want to hold the questions to the end?
Yes.
Okay, and so we do the presentation as opposed to jumping in. So as we go through why Powers and Sullivan, kind of what we just talked about leading off, we have the readiness, ability and experience to assist the county administer the ARPA funds and to ensure compliance with federal regulations. That's paramount and what we have to do, not only for you as what would be our client to make sure that you and your monitoring role is part of this, but to make sure that any of the funds that are spent by any of the member communities or if the county decides to utilize some of the funds themselves are in compliance and if those students due diligence needed to make sure that at the end of each one of your communities and your audits, that there's no question cost and everything is allowable as we go through. This is what we do all the time. We audit single audits, we audit federal grants as part of the Single Audit Act as we go through. And compliance is extremely important. Obviously, getting the approvals upfront is important, but also maintain the documentation and the of getting this done. One of the other things that we we think that's important is because of what we do and how we do it, some people like to overcomplicate things. I mean, I'm serious on this and require things that you don't need or come up with things that put a lot of burdens on not only your communities, but yourself for what is or isn't needed. And so we can go through that, sometimes a bureaucratic nightmare, to say, this is what's important. I mean, we audit places as big as Springfield with $80 million worth of federal grants each year. Okay, you know, more than half of what you're doing right here. And to tell you the God's honest truth, auditing those type of grants are a lot more complicated than this, okay? This, there's a lot of simplicity in the act as you go through it, and the same with the CARES. And so one of the things that we'll get on a little bit later is that, you know, how do they, how do they, how do the communities best use these particular funds? They have a lot of options and what you don't want to do is tell them what they have to spend it on. Your job is to allocate the funds to them and let them decide what they want to spend it. They want to do infrastructure, they want to do, you know, revenue replacement or whatever they want to do. It's like, all right, how do we best assist, you know, you make that determination? Because at least from my standpoint, when the county decided to accept these funds, that's probably what the objective was, is to assist your communities in this process as you go through that. And we're here to do that.
And if I could, we just went through a similar process, right, with the CARES Act. So I think we're in a good place right now to learn something. So, you know, Plymouth County administered the CARES Act for their member units. And there were some problems with that process. So we audited a lot of those communities. The biggest issue was the burdensome way that it was managed and how they had to request funds and the information that had to be commented, and it was more complex than it needed to be. So Jim started saying this, and I think that, you know, should you select us to do this, what we would do is really manage it like like a grant. Where we keep, you know, obviously you need to have an application and an approval process to make sure that the projects that each of your communities are going to do are eligible. But that's very broad and the needs of Quincy are going to be very different than the needs of Bedham or Holbrook. So making sure that they fall within the four eligible categories, making sure we have a process to have them sign off that they will, they'll manage them on their end and then get the funds out to the communities and through the reporting in a very streamlined basis that that really doesn't require them to be, you know, it was just so burdensome for some of my towns, I have to say that I audit to go through the CARES process. So I think that we can take this and learn from it. You know, the website that they had set up to be able to monitor that worked pretty well, but the amount of information and the timing of the information was just overly burdensome. So I think that we can make that much more simple for the communities involved. And really, you know, it's manageable, the 28 communities that you have, to be able to do some training, some outreach, to make sure that they are set up to make the most use of this money. Same problem with CARES, they left a lot of money on the table. They didn't spend a lot of the money. We don't want that to happen with ARPA. We, I mean, this is so broad that we should be able to make sure all the money they spend is eligible.
Yes, and that was a point that Renee just brought up. And one of the first things we have the page two is start with community outreach and training. We had so many clients come up to us and said, I have no idea how I'm going to spend this money, all right? And I would say to them, and I actually said that to a lot of my colleagues upfront when the kids came up, because the basics for both the CARES Act and the ARPA funds is, how does it, how does it relate to kids? It's got to be documentation of why this is needed because of the pandemic. And I did say one thing to them, name one thing, and I still haven't had an answer heard. In your life, personal or business, over the last year and a half that hasn't been affected by the pandemic, everything has. It's even written into the language of the bill. And it says they have extreme flexibility and like Renee said earlier, Quincy's use of the funds is different than Wellesley as you go through because their needs are different. Their demographics are different, all right? And so when we're talking about starting with community outreach and training, one of the things that we will propose as part of what we do, and we're local, we deal with Massachusetts communities. We know these particular communities. Like I said, we audit 10 of them and we know their differences. But what we want to do is help you, and obviously we come up with a program, and we'll have a seminar and ask and invite all 28 communities, all 28 communities auditors, audit firms, because, and obviously your audit firm as you go through, and bring them together and say, okay, here's the process, the the second bullet, develop policies and procedures. Obviously, we'd bring it to your attention first, get approval from the Commissioners and John as we went through and say, all right, this is what we want to do, this makes sense, and we want you to play devil's advocate as if you were sitting in a community and what you're sitting here and tell us, Jim, Renee, I'd like to tweak this a little bit, this makes sense, this doesn't make sense. But then get together and roll this out with them to say, okay, here's the process. It's going to be a standard process. It's going to be the same for Wellesley as it is for Quincy, all right? There's no deviation. You have to provide this type of documentation. It's the same documentation and what we'll talk about is that we'll work with your auditors and their auditors as we go through and we know ourselves what we need and say, this is the documentation. Because this program is in effect almost being audited three times. It'll be done internally for an internal audit, which you're relying on the CPA firm to assist you to get there. So you know that you're in compliance and monitoring this grant effectively and that you get the money spent and the time that's allotted. It will then also be audited by your auditors. And they're going to have to go through the Single Audit Act because they're going to have to audit that $137 million. So the documentation that we prepare and get all electronically as we go through that will facilitate and make the audit for, I think you do have Lynch as your auditor. So we'll talk with them, say, here's the documentation that we want, we're going to have it for you, it's going to be right there. Do the same thing with the community auditors as we go through with the communities and say, because they have to be audited too. So this is a three level audit from experienced Massachusetts audit firms. So and when you do a risk assessment, which you do in any audit, the the risk of actually spending money that would be unallowable is, to me, low because you're going to have three sets of professional eyes on this through this process. And that's why Renee was saying on the simplified piece of this, it's simplified in knowing how you audit these particular grants and then make sure upfront that the client, which would be in effect the communities, understand what documentation is needed based on the policies and procedures as approved by the Commissioners. That's a, this is, and we're going to have a training that, here, everybody show up, whether it's Zoom, whether it's in person, whatever everybody likes. So we explain in detail, here's the forms, here's how you do it, here's the ledgers you're going to need as you go through. And so that's a big part of our vision as we go through that. Develop a transparent system to disperse funds and monitor audit compliance. Those are things that we're going to have to go over with the Commissioners as you want to go through and say, all right, this is how we want to disperse the funds and we will have our recommendations that we can go through later.
What we would do, just to kind of go back to the, I'm going to say three sets of eyes or the odd, really making the audit compliance easy, you set up the website. You have a file share for each of the member units and one for the county because you're going to have your share of funds that you want to spend. Those documents will all be maintained in that. So, you know, we would look at them as we're going through the our process, but they're available to your auditors to look at too. When they come into audit, here's the website, all the documents in one place. So you're not then gathering information for them again. And the same, so each member unit would have, they can't look at each other's, obviously, there's going to be security there, but they could give access to their audit firm. So they're not then trying to recreate any additional information. That was the hard part with putting together information for different groups of people. Everybody wanted it in their own book. This would have all of the information in one place, very transparent so that it's available for everyone to use throughout the whole grant until it's done.
Right. And then even inside of that, there'll be other Excel schedules, other things that would be creating that would make available, obviously with your permission, to the local communities, their auditors and your auditors. Again, looking at it from what Renee was talking about, we saw the problems in the first one. And again, when you're the first one doing anything, you know what, it's not going to be perfect. And Plymouth did, in fact, a very good job in going through that. But we saw as part of our side, working with them and saying, you know what, this is what we think Powers and Sullivan could benefit North for by providing these things. Because this is just audit funds, you're not going to spend the money for the communities. You're not going to tell them, oh, I want you to, yeah, yeah, I want you to put in some new sewer infrastructure. I know it's allowable. You're just going to say, here's what's available to us and here's what's available to them. And and so we, those are the type of things that we want to do is. And the other thing that we want to do is part of that community outreach and training. One of the biggest things that I said earlier, one of the problems with the state, tell you the God's honest truth and part of that is when you ask them, can I spend it on this? And forgive me for, and don't yell at me, but bureaucrats are bureaucrats, right? Several of our, several of our clients, and I'm going to give Quincy as as an example.
That's a good place to start.
Yeah, I know.
Of course, everything starts in Quincy, so.
But with the mayor and everything else, they looked at things a little bit differently and saying, okay, how can we spend CARES fund because it's, it's related to that? And one of the things, and what I had them do. um, it, it's related to that. And one of the things, and what I had them do is to, we would always pre-audit everything. I didn't care about the little stuff with the size of Quincy. But they'd call me up or call, uh, my other partner up and say, all right, this is what we think we're going to do. And this is what you're asking part of what us to do. Say, this is what we want to do. Is it allowable? Here's the rationale. This is what going through. And I'd say, yes or no? And if you're going to do that, the biggest thing you want to do is document the rationale of why it's CARES related, why is it coronavirus related? And one of the things that they did is they looked at, say, the police force, public safety. Now, officers go out and make an arrest dealing with the public. You know, officers there, you arrest someone. Well, you've got to protect your public safety officers as you go through. And if you, if you arrested someone and you threw them in the back of the cruiser, you just expose that officer and anybody they meet to the potential of getting coronavirus from them. And so in order to deal with that, with the police chief, et cetera, I got a call from them saying, what we'd like to do is to get a couple of extra prisoner transport vehicles. So when the arrest is made, we could send that vehicle out there. The prisoner is protected themselves in the back. They're brought, booked and done the rest of the stuff. And then they have some sanitizing things that would automatically sanitize. They didn't have that and there was no need for, to doing that before CARES. And to me, that's common sense logic. And what we saw a lot of times, and again, I'm going to talk about bureaucrats sometimes. Sometimes they're afraid to make a mistake as opposed to a decision. All right? And if you talk this thing through, and even in the legislation, it says, we allow both in the CARES and this, extreme flexibility as part of this to make a determination of what's needed in one community and what's needed in another. Quincy, the size of that, needed that. It made sense to me. And I said, yes, if you spend it the way you're talking about, that's there. And so in a lot of our other communities, some did a great job, other places, like I said earlier, said, I don't know how to spend this money. And so what we want to do is after that initial outreach, we would explain the process of how to go through that. Six months into it, okay, say in, in January, February, March, what we'd like to do, obviously with the commissioner's, uh, uh, permission, is to have another meeting with all the players. And explain to them all the different types of expenditures that has occurred, not only in Norfolk County, we got a hundred and thirty seven million dollars. But what all our other, you know, we, we audit, oh, about seventy different communities in Massachusetts out of the three hundred and fifty one. So we're going to bring that knowledge with us and say, oh, this is what Springfield did. This is what Lawrence did. This is what Lowell did. This is what Wellesley did. This is what's and, and that was all deemed allowable as part of that, to give them the knowledge to go back and talk to their town administrators, their select board, their mayors, et cetera, to say, oh, we didn't realize this. And we can do that. All right? I, I just think because if after, you know, a year and a half, some of the metrics that we're going to do, because we're going to control all of what's being spent, what was used today, what was allowable. But some communities in a year might spend eighty five percent of their allotment and they're looking great safe. Some other ones may be spending fifteen percent. And so what would suggest is that, and we would do one-on-one with them if you wanted us to do it.
Some are going to need more, some are going to need more.
And we're here to do this. And if you take a look in the back, we've listed, uh, you know, ten or so people that are partners and managers who are going to be working on this. We're not putting on this because, um, our kids out of college. All right? Now, they may fill out an Excel spreadsheet and do the basics of the scenes, et cetera. You're talking about people with ten plus years worth of experience that are supervisors, managers, CPAs, partners, that are going to be working directly on that. And one of the benefits that we, we have is part of what we're doing here is assisting you, some of them being our clients, which is half the money, um, as we go through. And those people are going to have an intricate knowledge of what's there because one of the things we're going to ask as part of the procedures that makes sense is that before they put the application into you, they need to be audited by their auditor, whatever firm is auditing, whether it's Cliff and Larson Allen, whether it's uh, Bob Brown and Associates, whether it's, uh, Roselli and Clark, or whomever it is, the, the auditor. We're going to say, run that by your auditor first. Let's make sure that the person that's going to actually audit all the detail is in line with the purpose of what's going to occur. Get their approval first, then it'll come to you. More than likely, we're going to have communication with them because we all know each other. Okay? And it's like, all right, this is what, and if they had a question, um, Tony Roselli calls us up all the time on, on stuff and he'd call up Renee saying, this is what we think is okay. Do you agree? And we'd say, as long as they spend it in accordance with that rationale, okay. But if they decide to spend it on something else and kind of lying to us as we go through, that's what the detail audit will do. And then we can do the same thing with Lynch and make sure that they're okay. If there's anything that's questionable, what, but you, what you're going to find in this, most of these things are going to be allowable just on a section, you know, they, you can have one community say, we're going to put together a, a water and sewer project that we've always wanted to do. It's going to cost four million dollars. We've got a five million dollar allocation. It's a new project. It's directly okay.
Easy.
Easy, done. We're done. And all you have to do is verify the expense.
But, and the trickier thing will be, because we're already getting a lot of questions and we're reviewing is the lost revenue calculation. So we have, um, you know, we've worked with the state with Division of Local Services before they put out their going to the, to the towns to make sure that everybody was on board and what that calculation would look like. We're already reviewing that calculation for a lot of our clients and a lot of them, it's not a difficult calculation, but some of the initial questions that came out, what had, you know, we vetted the whole school building assistance. What if we get school building assistant payments? Are they going to, are they going to impact that? And the answer is no. We went through that with, um, both the Gatsby and Commonwealth to make sure that everybody was on agreement that those should not be included. We've already documented that. So I think some communities are going to be sort of astute enough to have that calculation done. Some are going to need more handholding and we're prepared to do that. Um, for those, for those that need it, if they're looking, once you get the lost revenue calculation, you can basically use this money for anything except for for things. You can't fund your stabilization pension, you can't put it into debt service. Um, you know, there are a couple, a couple of little things. Other than that, if you make lost revenue, you can transfer it to the general and then use it. So we'll want to make sure if they're going to do that, we have that calculation and that we agree with it.
And, and you want them to put that in and every part of the policies and procedures into a special revenue grant fund. Because once it's into a grant fund, they can spend that without further appropriation based on DLR regulations and how they have to manage their funds. So the administration can then use that for whatever they want. And like Renee said, as long as it's not spent on a few things. Now, one of the things I didn't do, I didn't look at what time we started. So I'll be short on time because we.
We're, we're going over a little, but you have the benefit of being lost.
Okay.
That's a benefit. I'd like to pause and get into a few questions.
Mr. Chairman, I've got to cut out at twelve thirty for another meeting.
Well, what we're going to do then, if you don't mind, is let's blend it together here and go to questions.
Well, I know we've got a few other things. We want to do is we, we set up a separate portal. Renee already went over that. For you, we, we have the ability to get that done for you. We work with your IT people. Um, I already checked. Uh, it's, it's available at Norfolk County, uh, opera dot, uh, org is available. I did that yesterday. All right? And, um, and so that's there. We put a link on your website, link over there. Everything is one place. Everybody has their own, in effect, portal for each one, give access to everybody. We're going to simplify the documentation as part of that, knowing what's needed as an auditor. And know what your auditors need and know what their auditors need. Uh, standard electronic approvals, uh, transparency, um, uh, uh, is important. Um, and what we're going to do is we're going to require these communities, we would suggest that establish its own fund on there. And as they do that, they're going to identify to you and to us what fund it's in, what's the purpose, here's the accounting, and we're going to require what I suggest would be quarterly general ledger reports as we go through. And one of the things you don't want to be doing, just as a suggestion, there's no need to do this on a reimbursement basis, meaning that, okay, go out and spend the money and then we'll give you the money back. You have the money upfront. You'll have a hundred and thirty seven million dollars in the bank. There's no need for your communities, if they have a project to go through that, to, and, and grants happen like this all the time, that you give the money upfront. We'll give you, you know, give us the cash flow. What do you need for? All right, we're going to give you three million dollars and you have to report back every quarter on that. And if you do want to give the documentation that's required as part of the training, that's part of what's approved, what we would suggest is that no additional funds be transmitted to them until that documentation is received. To protect your interests and make sure you manage that. But I'd be more inclined of giving the money that way as opposed to bring it back the other way. You don't have to micromanage this process where every invoice has to be sent into you to say, I approve this. It's okay. They're going to say, you know, we can upfront, oh, we're going to put an infrastructure plan in place. Give us the contract. Okay, contract, yeah, it's a three million dollar contract with, you know, uh, whatever, whatever thing. And say, okay, that makes sense. It's been approved and as we go through. And we'll do all the individual accounting and we'll help your, uh, accounting. Um, uh, be accounted for in a manner that makes it transparent to your auditors and you. Anything else quick before?
We're going to go into some questions, Jim. Commissioners, questions. Start with Commissioner Stady.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, very solid presentation. Uh, first question I have, I've been asking the other candidates. Um, and it does, I think I know the answer to this one, but, uh, you have performed audits in the county for, uh, different municipalities. Uh, do you feel that would present any kind of a, uh, conflict or compromise in doing that?
No, we, we don't. I mean, Renee and I went over this, uh, beforehand. We're not acting as, we're working with you, separate client. We're not working with the community. And the, the function that we perform here, we're not auditing anything. We're just helping you account for and document what the community is doing. The community is going to make the decision, not you, not us, on what they're going to spend the money on. When we audit them, we'll audit them as their auditor. However, they do, that documentation is going to, I, I anything that could, uh, uh, impair our independence would be at the clients and we don't act as management there. We come in after the fact. And like we do now, Commissioner, that we pre-audit Quincy. And that's all we do here is we're going to pre-audit with their auditor, which would be us in this case. And, and same thing with, uh, I, I think, uh, Cliff and Austin Allen also has that as, as part of their clients. We're going to just pre-audit. They're going to spend the money. We're not going to direct them how to spend the money. We're not going to do any of the bidding process with them and we have to maintain that integrity. Our relationship with you really doesn't carry over to them because all we're doing is accounting. We are not going to give you an audit opinion for you. We're just making sure that when you get audited, we as your consultants will be able to allow your auditor to audit that. And then your auditor will make the determination whether or not there's any question cost based on the way you want a particular grant. I don't know if you have anything else, Renee?
Yeah, so.
That's fine, that's fine. I know the hour's getting late. I mean, I'm not being rude. I'm going to ask a second follow-up question. That's fine. Thank you. Um, the other thing I had was in terms of your staff, in terms of able to handle the volume of the work with twenty eight cities and towns and the fact that you have other things going on. And perhaps, maybe perhaps being engaged by other counties, uh, would you be designating a portion of your staff strictly for Norfolk County? Or how would you break that up? We want to make sure that we're taken care of. How would, are you going to delegate a part of your team? Are you going to be part of the team? Are you the captain as, you know, Chairman Shay uses? How would that be handled?
Well, right off the bat, Renee and I will be the captain of the team. That's why we're here. Okay? And so you, and what we do for any significant client, and this will be a significant client because this is a lot of work. Well, goodness, all right? This is, this is harder than most, more time consuming than most of our audits. But everybody's busy, Commissioner. Okay? No matter how you do it. And we've evaluated our staff. We've got thirty people employed. Um, all the time. This is what we do. I would suggest that we're more efficient than a lot of places be- because this is all we do. We don't have tax clients. Okay? We do Massachusetts municipalities and single audits. That's what we do. And so we have a great team that's been in it. If you take a look at, which we didn't give you a full presentation, but you'll see all our partners have twenty five plus years worth of, actually except for Todd, you've got twenty, um, uh, years of experience in Massachusetts, auditing Massachusetts municipalities. Our managers, ten plus for every one of them. These are the people that will be assigned and making the important decisions. And we will allocate a team to that. We'll probably have Todd Jersey, who is another one of our partners, be involved because he is our internal single audit um, expert. Like his assignment is part of our role in there is to make sure that we are in compliance with all the auditing techniques and staying on top of all the new rules, including the CARES Act. Unfortunately, he was on vacation uh, this week, so we didn't want to pull him back to have him here with us. But, um, but we will do that and anything else. And we'd, we'd probably put a, a supervisor on this too, as a single point person to go through and, and manage all of the documents and, and whatever point person that, I don't know, John would be the point person here.
He is.
Yeah.
And if I, if I could just add very quickly to that, to answer your question, I don't think we would need to have, like, break off three full-time staff people to do nothing but this, but we would guarantee to you that once something goes up on that portal, that it is addressed within a timely manner. So there's nothing, it's not going to benefit us to, to not have things addressed or taken care of timely. We would put, what's going to happen is there's going to be a lot of effort put in upfront. And then probably in year three or four of this, you're not going to need as much effort, right? So getting on a schedule for reporting the information timely and approving the projects, we see a lot of manpower in setting it up and a lot of manpower in the initial community outreach, making sure they have their ledgers set up. And then it will, it will vary as needed as time goes on. So we will give you the dedication of the staff that we need to stay on top of it.
And, and we would, we would expect to say every six months or sooner uh, come to a commissioners meeting to give you an update on the progress and where we are and what we're thinking. Uh, we, and, and that would be Renee, myself, or both, or Todd as we go through that.
I probably would want sooner, honestly. I, I think it's going to be a very significant undertaking, one of the largest counties I've ever had. And I think we're all in agreement that we want to do a very good job. We're very focused. We know everybody's eyes are on us. And we probably want to be more content in six months, so.
Yeah. But what, upfront, as we, we talked about developing the policies and procedures. That'll be very intensive over the rest, depending on when you're hired, over the balance of August. And so we need to sit down and get you drafts of those that would then have a meeting with the commissioners and John and et cetera to go through and say, does this make sense? Let's get this out. The first two months are going to be very labor intensive to get that out so the communities can start spending their money as you go through. And then after that, you know, that, that, like Renee said, three years from now, it won't be as intense as it will be for the first six months. So maybe the meetings with the commissioners is every month with a report and then it'll go to every three months as people have spent their money as they go through, um, and, and.
And, you know, some of the things you're going to have to think of, if you, if you haven't already decided is how much money you're going to hold back. Right? So you have a hundred and thirty seven million dollars. You're going to hold back some for county projects and or administration. How much is going to be made available? In what format do you want to provide that? And then there's communication because these communities are banking on some of this money and they're, and they're waiting to hear how and when they're going to get that.
I think if I could, Mr. Chairman, may I ask one follow-up? Thank you. And I don't want to take repeat this time, but very quickly, it's a good point. I think that's something we have to discuss and kind of resolve once we get our firms selected, um, because we don't get the one thirty seven, as you know, we get a portion of it. Uh, but then we've talked about the focus being on the cities and towns and then perhaps in phase two, something else. And it'd be nice to look at generally, generally, where are we going in terms of the big picture? But I want to clarify one thing you said, as if John, right?
Jim, Jim.
Yeah, sorry. Uh, I want to make sure I got this right. I think I heard you right. You were saying that with the towns, you would say that, let's say Canton or Westwood has an application for a three million dollar water project. Okay? Perhaps they come to us and that fits within the guidelines of what we're going to do. You're saying you don't give them all, you give them a certain amount, and then based on the completion of certain tasks in compliance, then more funds will be released. Is that what? then more funds will be released. Is that what you want?
Yeah, what I'd ask for is, because when you do a project like that, because when you do a big project, usually that's wandered, all right? And so what's required upfront is a cash flow analysis saying, when are we going to need that money?
Right.
If you're not gonna need that whole three and a half million dollars upfront on day one, you'd say, all right, we have to do the engineering, we have to do that, the architectural piece. And so that's going to be, you know, $500,000 for the first three months, it's gonna be $500,000. And then we've got the contract that is starting and that's gonna be a one or a two-year project. So based on their cash flow, you would give them upfront. So say in the next three months, they need a half a million. I would give them, I would suggest that you give them a half a million upfront. So they don't have to go out to borrow. So it doesn't cost them anymore. And then we require accounting for them for each one of those months in the first six months, the three months. And then the project that is either delayed or not because not everything goes according to plan. And then so you fund that as they need it so they don't have to go through the burden of borrowing for the funds. And so you give them the funds upfront, you know, they spent $423,000 out of $500 and they get cash flow for a million over the next six months. And then you can make a determination in here based on what you want to do is give them a half a million now. In three months, they're gonna give us another report. We take a look at it. Oh, they need another half a million. And just cash management is all I'm saying. It makes sense, which reduces the burden. Because if, if we don't give it upfront, what will happen is the community will have 15 invoices for, you know, $750,000. Well, they're gonna have to then send those invoices in here. We would then have to review it. Would have to then request that documentation. Would have to go through whatever internal processes we say in here before they get the money. So that could delay the project another month by the time it gives it as opposed to letting them spend their money. It's been allocated to them. It's their money after you make a decision on how it's there. And it would just, one of the things we set up, reduce the burden on you, your staff. We're not cutting the checks. You guys are cutting the checks. And reduce their administrative and like Renee said, that was part of the problem that we saw down in Plymouth that caused headaches that didn't need to occur.
People were waiting, people were waiting for money. That was the problem.
Right. I think, I think, all right. So I think the lesson learned from Plymouth would be quickly is that clear expectation and guidelines to our towns, our constituents. They have to know, for example, if we're given, no, with $3 million, sure, we're gonna give them $3 million, but it'll be piecemeal based on performance. That's what you're basically saying, you know? Okay. All right. Sounds good. Sorry for going over time. I'm sorry.
Sorry. Commissioner Collins, do you have a question too?
I don't have any questions. I just wanted to thank Jim and Renee. I thought you gave a really nice presentation. And you simplified a lot of things that were kind of overwhelming us. And we did interview three other entities for this position. And and you had a nice local feel for it and you were getting into the, you were getting into the weeds about it and they weren't. So it was kind of neat to have you give your presentation this way. So thank you.
Thank you.
The weeds are important because we live in those, okay? As auditing these, the single audit piece, and we know how that affects everybody's ability to do them. Guess what? You still have to do your normal work, right?
Yep.
Okay. All right. You still have to do your day-to-day. That doesn't change. And now you get this additional burden on there. And that's a couple of things you may want to take a look at because it's available to, in effect. This is, this is a, the only reason you're doing this is CARES, you know, is coronavirus related. So you're as eligible as everybody else if people want to give additional funds to their employees because they have to work overtime even though they have salary. To say, you know what? We know you have to do this. We're gonna give you another $5,000, $10,000, et cetera. CARES didn't allow that, but this does. And so it's, it's to me a fear. Fear that you're putting burden on your employees that they may not be compensated for it, but they should be. At least the way I look at it as a business person. You know, if I ask my people to do an extra, I give them a bonus type of thing if they do something well. Not to tell you guys what to do, but that's some of the things that the communities may be doing. And some of the things, and again, I'm just gonna mention Quincy again because I got a call from Quincy during the CARES Act asking if they could do it. And I said, no, okay? It's not there. What if they asked me now? Because, and they were looking at the health director in Quincy. And says, you know, she's killing herself. She's doing this. She's working overtime, getting tense and doing everything. She's working 70, 80 hours a week but still get a salary. I said, I'd love to say yes, but we can't. You'd have to find the council to approve additional. I don't know what they did or not. But those are the type of things that we offer. And the other thing is whenever you make that decision, we expect to immediately, like Renee put up in the presentation, we are ready and available to do this, you know.
You need, you need to get these funds out. Communities need these funds.
We're gonna give you next week.
The intent of it is to get the program going very quickly.
We have our summer audit on Friday, so we're not gonna.
We won't be there. All right. I know we're running over a little and I appreciate it, but I promised my commissions would be done at 12:30. We are, let me just tell you that we're aware that we're, this is on our front burner. We rare the timeframes. I, we were even told that some, some reporting needed to be done by the end of August. I don't believe, although we did post this meeting, that we might perhaps take a vote today. I don't believe we're going to take a vote today. I'm not ready. We're gonna send this additional information out to everyone, but it could be as early as next week and we'll be back and forth with you. And if you have any questions, you know, call us, call any of us and John, John is our point guy. But this, this, we, we know a lot more than we knew at 8 o'clock this morning, but we knew it was coming in.
But we expected.
We appreciate it. This is what we're doing.
For you, we're gonna be controlling those documents with your ledgers and then obviously you need to approve them and send them in. But we're not going to destroy you.
And the first report due at the end of August is only for funds spent through the end of July, so I think you're okay with that.
Okay, correct.
But then the second report comes right after that.
We're, the treasurer's on board, treasurer's in, you know, some of the money, we got, we did get a distribution that's in the Eastern Bank. And we're excited, but you know, it's so new that if I had an opinion from everyone that, well, a dollar for every opinion I've gotten on this, I'd be rich. But I've been in government long enough to know, but it's exciting and we, we know our obligation and we're gonna, we're gonna pass it through.
We're excited. It's a lot of money.
We need a first-class accounting firm to do that. Any other questions, commissioners, before we adjourn?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, if you could for us, I know a couple of the clients gave materials. Can you leave those for tomorrow? We could get them at our meeting regularly.
Yes. And we'll leave these here. If you'd like it electronically, we can send it as well.
If you, if we get, if John could give us your emails, well, by the time we leave, we'll get it to you this afternoon and add a PDF. Up to you what you want to do.
Yeah, we're meeting tomorrow's agenda.
I can't, you know, look at it honestly today. I got a client, another hearing to get ready for it. But I will certainly look at it tomorrow and there's the chairman's comments. We probably don't think we're gonna vote it today, Mr. Chairman. I think we need to kind of, you know, sort it out. Good meeting. Solid meeting. Done. Right? Good job.
Okay, this concludes the matter of a presentation from Powers and Sullivan relative to APRA funds. Thank you. Anything else?
We're adjourned till.
You have a second to that?
Second.
All in favor of adjournment?
Hi.
Hi. This meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you for having us.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone. Billy, unless you want to drop those off tonight.
Put them with the agenda.
I will.
I left the cards for them as well.
Coming out, right? I think. Yeah. That'd be great. Thank you. I can look at it.
We're all together.
All right. Thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Pleasure meeting you.
Nice meeting you too.
All best. Thanks, Ray.
Nice to meet you.
Renee, nice to meet you.